And says we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll of call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting. Please make sure you visit MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hands electronically and I will call on you in turn. So that we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Councilmember Yurey.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein.
Here.
Mayor Crisanti.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. I'd like to lead us into pledge of allegiance. And of our heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay. And for some reason, my screen just went dark. So let's try, I'm gonna get back.
We can see you, Paul.
Well, that's good. I'll figure out how to make it so I can see you guys too. All right. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Would you like to call for the vote on that motion first?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Fair.
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Councilmember Yurey.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein.
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti.
Yes.
Motion carries. And the agenda for this meeting was properly posted on December 2nd, 2022.
Okay. Right. Do we have any communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda but for which the city council has subject matter jurisdiction?
Yes, you have three speakers signed up. They are Bert Ross, E. Barry Haldeman, and Scott Dietrich. We'll hear from Bert Ross first.
Thank you. Are you available, Bert?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Mikey and Karen, thank you both for your service to our community. And for the countless hours you have dedicated to helping make Malibu a better place to live. I am so sorry you had to endure the incessant personal attacks when all you did was work on our behalf. You deserve so much better. I hope you find some solace in the fact that those candidates whom you supported were elected. This should be your ultimate vindication. You are good people and the silent majority thanks you. Paul, you have been an exemplary mayor. For two terms, you have served as mayor with dignity despite some unwarranted vicious attacks on your character. You never responded in kind. You love this city and have worked for many years in and out of government to improve Malibu. I know as a member of the council, you will continue to serve Malibu unselfishly. We owe you a debt of gratitude. Mary Ann and Doug, congratulations on your impressive victory. You both ran a clean campaign addressing the issues that matter most to the people who live here. And you did not engage in demeaning your opponents or name calling. I know you will work to restore the civility which has been sorely missing and which we so desperately want. I am confident that you will do Malibu proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Our next speaker is E. Barry Haldeman.
Hey Barry, are you available?
Barry, you just joined the meeting, but you are unmuted. Barry, are you there? If Barry's unavailable at the moment, we can move on to Scott Dietrich and circle back to him.
Let's go to Scott then. Scott, are you available?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And congratulations to Doug and Mary Ann. And I did want to thank both Mikey and Karen. And just note that every time I've sent an email out to council. Karen was always the first responded to everything and I certainly do appreciate all the work she put in. Our council, our new council has many things. That are pressing down on Malibu. I suspect that Mr. Haldeman was going to talk about one of them. So if he doesn't show up, I'll fill in. Namely, the MRCA's ridiculous attempt to take over Bluffs Park and ruin that in the Esche Zone. And their efforts at Ramirez Canyon. And I want to remind everyone that you only have a couple days to put in your objections. This will change Malibu forever. So please write in. It's on the city website. I'm sure Steve McClary or Paul can give you the link. Tonight, but this is crucial for citizens of Malibu. Unlike any other projects, they want to put nearly 500 camping sites at Bluffs Park. Horrible idea. I just can't understand how they would take this pristine. Bluff, the last one in Southern California, and ruin it. They want to put in an amphitheater on and on and on. But the other thing that I wanted to speak on, and I hope Barry will confirm and be able to get on and talk about the two parks. But the other thing, there are many issues facing us. We have to deal with these unified, they're outside agencies that are all trying to take a piece of Malibu and ruin it. We recently saw how the Coastal Commission just denied our hard fought. Red ordinance on short term rentals. Because they want hotels in our neighborhood. So I urge the new council, work together and fight all the things, fight all these outside organizations. Because if we're not unified, they're gonna pick us off one by one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott.
And now we'll see if we can circle back to Barry Haldeman.
I am here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Barry.
Well, Scott did a terrific job and I'll just kind of amplify on that. I think the most pressing thing we have is the MRCA position on Bluffs Park at the moment. And then there are others that we can talk about at the next meeting. But it's very important that people understand what they need to do. This is their, they are preparing an environmental impact report. So just complaining that gee, I don't want it in my backyard, etc., is not gonna work. What you have to do is to ask specific questions about how they're gonna manage it. What's the fire protocol? Are you gonna register people? How long can you stay in the camp, etc.? And if, if Steve can put up on the website. Both the letter that the city is writing, which in draft form was a terrific letter. You can use that as an example. I think it's important that not just the city write the letter. And we've been kind of organizing a group of people to write letters and take one particular aspect. And comment on it and make these people work and respond to us as to what's going on. So. There is a list of all the things they want to put in and, and Scott mentioned a lot of them, which is flameless camping, whatever that is. Guard house, a amphitheater, what are they gonna do in an amphitheater there? This is gonna become a commercial stop because the MRCA advertises that you can do weddings and film shoots and everything on their property. So if, if that ain't gonna destroy the, the Bluffs area, I don't know what is. And the trails just lead down to Malibu Road. And I want to remind everybody that, that a number of years ago, somebody threw a lit cigarette out of the, the window of their car. And it took four minutes to get down to the road and burn seven houses. So again, I would ask that maybe somebody put on the website right away under ML, maybe it's there, an MRCA. Where you have to write it and etc. And what kind of letters you can say and what the city letter looks like. And if anybody has any questions, they can find me and ask me. I'm happy to tell you. And there are a couple of other people who are helpful too. So thank you very much. I will leave my congratulations to the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barry.
And Mayor, that concludes public comment for items not on the agenda.
Good. Do we have any commission or committee updates?
Yes, we have three updates tonight from Lloyd Ahern, Scott Dietrich, and Lottie Sharon. We'll hear from Lloyd Ahern first.
Hey Lloyd, are you available?
Yes. Paul, how are you, sir?
Good.
My name's Lloyd Ahern and I am the representative to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy representing Malibu. And last Monday, we had a meeting. And you vote on all the items which are just unbelievable, the amount of stuff that Joe and, and the MRCA are involved in. And one of them got my attention real big time, which was. There is going to be a $400,000 grant from the MRCA to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy for a, a water pipe that goes up into Ramirez Canyon for that campground. So I was asking, I, I kind of interrupted the young man that was Mario, who was gonna give the presentation. And I said, I'm gonna ask some questions before this thing gets started. And I started asking questions and they weren't get gotcha questions. They were real. You know, and good questions because you can't be picking fights at these meetings. And all of a sudden, Joe just stepped in and he said, look, Lloyd. I'm gonna guarantee you, you get the people from Ramirez Canyon together. We'll get on a Zoom call. Get all, all the questions you want. And we will have a Zoom call with my staff and with your folks in Ramirez. So what I'm asking for tonight is I want to get. Richard Mulica from planning to help me, Rob DeBeau from Public Works to help. I've talked to a certain amount of people in Ramirez already and we could get a really good. Set of questions to start out this journey we're going on with Joe. And I think it, it would be a big help if. If we just keep it really cool, you know, to, to at least start with. And Joe was very, very anxious to be gracious. So. I would say let's take advantage of that and I hope you. And also Trevor, I would like to talk to Trevor also and ask some questions. So that's my report from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Dietrich.
Hi Scott. Welcome back.
Thank you again, Paul. From Public Works Commission. There's been an ongoing issue when in past years, the council decided to terminate. The telecommunications commission and hand that, those duties over to the Public Works Commission. And yet, I guess inadvertently. Telecommunications was not part of the Public Works Commission work plan. So we cannot deal with that. So I'm asking the council to, I don't know if you have to agendas it for a future meeting. But to add that to the Public Works Commission work plan because right now, nobody's dealing with this. If it's a right project, it goes to the Planning Commission. But it sort of lacks the input that I, I think the city structure really requires. So I'm asking you guys to make that part of the work plan. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Scott.
And our final commission report is from Lottie Sharon.
Hey Lottie, are you available?
Lottie, you should see a pop up asking you to unmute.
Hold on a second here. Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh gosh, it seems like they're.
We hear you just fine.
Got two meetings going on at once here. Okay, on behalf of the Arts Commission. I'd also like to thank Mikey and Karen for their service and warmly welcome Mary Ann and Doug on board. The Arts Commission has on its work plan exploring the possibility of an art center in Malibu. This has been a pending item for years and we tried every which way to get this moving. From all our research, the residents really want to see this happen. I spoke last spring asking if the council would create a survey to determine best use of our publicly acquired properties. But no action by the council has been taken. The commission has completed a draft survey to distribute to Malibu residents for this purpose. But we really need the city council to be active on this issue. Can you please let us know what is your next move? What action will you take so we can finally get an art center process moving? What action will you take so we can finally get an art center process moving? Thank you.
Thank you, Lottie. Do we have anyone else, Kelsey?
No, you don't have any other commission reports.
Good. Is Steve McClary available, our city manager?
I am. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Few things to report this evening. One, happy to report that a long awaited project, the Signal Synchronization Project for Pacific Coast Highway has been out, is now out to bid. That is scheduled to be opened in January, so we are anxious to see what we will get back for those, and we'll report back to council once we have that bid opening. Want to point out, of course, we are running into the holiday season, and there will be some closures. We will be closed on, City Hall will be closed on Monday, December 26, and also the following Monday. And then we'll be back in full operation on the third. So happy holidays to everybody. And not too coincidentally, with this time of year, we are seeing unfortunately, an increase in not only the number of COVID cases that are being reported in LA County, but we're also starting to see a significant increase in significant numbers of reported cases of influenza and other respiratory viruses. Unfortunately, the LA County Public Health announced that county has moved into the high community transmission level as of this week regarding COVID. Public health officials are asking residents to take precautions such as indoor masking and getting vaccinated and boosted. And also encouraging persons to be especially careful in gatherings with large numbers of persons. The county has reported 7,845 new cases over just the past three days and 39 new deaths over that period. The current test positivity rate is up to 12.1%. And the seven day average case count is up nearly 20% from a week ago, so they are definitely seeing an increase in cases in LA County. As I mentioned, they're also seeing an increase, flu and other respiratory illnesses, which is putting a bit of a strain on the healthcare system. Wanted to, on another good note, wanted to report that we, we do have in the license plate readers. So that's very good news. The Sheriff's Department is expected to begin installing them as soon as next week. Again, we're very happy to see these onboard. Just remind and reemphasize that these are going, primarily going to be used to assist the Lost Hills detectives with their crime solving and to also alert patrol units to vehicles in the areas whose plates are associated with a crime. But it's not necessarily going to be used for actively monitoring areas and like a cert, security camera or for putting out speeding tickets, unfortunately. So happy to know that those are coming onboard. Also want to report that last week I attended the holiday celebration of the Malibu Cert, so thank you for the invite on that. It's great to see a great level of camaraderie around, among that team and, and a high level, a very, a great number of very dedicated individuals. My wish to them was that we never have to use them. But it's nice to know that they're so well trained and so well prepared if we do need to call on them in event of a disaster. Also wanted to bring to your attention and, and thank you to Barry Haldeman for mentioning the, the concern with the with MRCA's accommodation plans. The city did submit a seven page comment letter today to MRCA regarding their notice of preparation for their environmental impact report. I will, we will make sure that that is posted on the city's website as well as information on the deadline and how persons could submit a comment letter if they are interested. That is the extent of my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have any council members who would like to report on meetings they have attended? Any inquiries they've received? Mr. Euring.
You're muted.
Me unmute?
You're unmuted.
Okay, done. Thank you, Paul. Yeah, a couple of things. First, I just I was, I was sad to hear that Elizabeth Shaberson is leaving. I had, I did not spend a whole bunch of time with her in prior years, but probably the last eight to nine months, I've had a good deal of interaction with her. She, she's very accessible. She's very professional. She is knowledgeable. And her personality is such that communicating with her is, is, is a very pleasant experience. So I'm not sure where Elizabeth is going. I think with the skill set she has, she's going to be very good at whatever she decides to do. I, we're going to miss her, and I just wish her the very best. So that, that's all I got to say on that one. I attended the art exhibit at the city last week or the week before, and whatever that was, the music art, it was very nicely done. I had a chance not, not only to see some good art, but to meet some people I haven't met in a while. So it was a very pleasant experience. MRCA, I attended a meeting that I think was basically organized by Barry Haldeman last week on Saturday to try and get the community organized in terms of responding to some of the EIR issues that are going, we're going to be faced with, with the MRCA plan to camp in Bluff Park and Ramirez Canyon. And one of the things that came up at the meeting, and I got reinforced with a couple of times over the course of the week, was the fact that I can find this someplace. One of the, the participants in the meeting brought up the fact that, you know, we, at Bluff Park, we've got a skateboard park. We've got kids playing baseball. We've got kids playing soccer. We've got some, you know, locations there for children to, to work with. And with this MRCA thing, we could have somewhere in the range of, you know, in the course of the summer, 4,000 plus people camping in Bluff Park. Without, as best we can tell, any plan to register any of these people, to find out who they are. And I got an email today from one of the residents that reminded me that California just released 7,000 convicted sex offenders after spending less than a year in prison. So my point of this, if, if you're a parent and you've got children that, you know, participate in activities at Bluff Park, get involved in writing to Joe Edmiston on this EIR. I think that is, that it could be one of the big issues that if I were a parent, I would be concerned with, because there is no based on what I can tell, there's no authority on Bluff or in the, in Edmiston's plan to deal with emergencies. So I think that's something you want to get involved with, so I encourage the parents in Malibu to take a look at that and see what, and, and send something in to Joe. Let's make some noise about that one. And then finally, I want to go back to the Adamson House. They are having their Christmas tours. If you have not had a chance to do that, I again encourage you to go down there and take a look. It is, it's a wonderful time. They've got it decorated very nicely. So please go down, participate, get involved in what's going on in Malibu. I think you'll really enjoy yourself. So Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. I'm looking for a hand, but who would like to go next? Bruce?
I'd be happy to go next, and then they save last for Karen and Mikey if they want to talk tonight. So I want to echo Steve's comments about Elizabeth Shaberson. I'm going to miss her. I, I already expressed privately my goodbyes to her earlier today, but publicly, I'll tell you, she's, she's just very professional, very smart, very diligent, and I've had nothing but good things to say about her and, and her work, so we'll, we'll, we'll be sorry to see her leave. I attended the community meeting, a community meeting regarding the MRCA Bluffs Park proposal, which was very helpful for me to hear from residents and, and, and I shared some thoughts with them, which I hope were helpful to them as well. I have to say, I said it there, and I'll say it again. The letters are important, the effort to prevent, to stop this or slow it down through the, through the EIR process and the other normal processes is important. Don't give up on it. But I do believe ultimately it's going to require a lawsuit. This is not a public works project, at least that's, that is going to be the, the fighting line. And if it's not a public works project, then MRCA has to come through the city of Malibu, meaning through the city planning department, the planning commission, and ultimately the city council to get authorization to move forward with this proposal. If it's a public works project, they can evade and avoid us and, and do an end run around the city and go right to coastal where we know what will happen. So we're going to be having hopefully a closed session meeting to discuss this. We'll get legal advice about it, but I, I just don't see how it's going to be avoided. I have attended multiple meetings since the la, well, since last meeting, two meetings of California Strategies along with Paul. And this has been one of the subjects we've discussed. We're also discussing and hopefully making some progress on seeing what it'll take to get Highway Patrol, CHP, back on PCH for Malibu. Something that's been going on for a long time. Who knows if we'll have success, but we're going to keep trying. We're not going to give up. I have met in the last two weeks, I've met separately with both Doug and Mary Ann. What, I previously congratulated them. I want to get, we want to make sure we're getting off on a good foot together. We were working to see what common ground we might have. Cautious of Brown Act issues, so didn't discuss the same subject matters of either one, and I presume they did the same. But in any event, I think we're going to have a good working council for the next two years. And lastly, I was invited to speak to the, to a segment of the city council of Aberdeen, Washington regarding their homelessness issues. They're a town that's slightly larger than double our size, so a relatively small town. They have a similar situation where the vast majority of the people living unhoused in their town didn't grow up there, didn't, didn't lose their homes there. They've just migrated there because it's a good place they view to live unhoused. And we were batting around ideas and thoughts for how to move forward. They're, they're facing the same issues we're facing. I suspect that's the same up and down the coast because of the knife circuit, so see if we can't find something common to do there. And that's my report for this week.
Thank you, Bruce. Mikey?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, really didn't have much of a report, so just a, a couple of comments here. Most of my activities were based on, you know, meeting with Doug and Mary Ann and, you know, clearing up my desk, getting ready to bring a pile of stuff back to the city. It doesn't take all that long. But some comments here. I think CHP in Malibu is something everyone's wanted to do. I worked on certainly the ongoing MRCA issues. I, I think in hope that it's going to take, it's going to take leaving Malibu to make this happen. It's going to take trips to Sacramento. It's going to take working with legislators that are a pay grade above ours, which is every legislator, and that's, that's my take on that. Many legislators above us are scared of Joe. So it's, it really takes a lot of effort. The CHP thing is bizarrely complicated and shouldn't be, but it is. So that's it. I just wanted to, you know, the way I see it, it's, it's not going to happen on Zoom to make this happen. So it's going to take some personal interaction and, and a lot of effort, but I do wish the new council the best on that, and really those are just my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Karen?
Thanks, Paul. A report. So on December 1st, I attended the fundraiser at the Canyon Club for the Sheriff's Department cadets that were injured in that massive disaster in Whittier. It was packed. Hopefully, there was no malfeasance going on, because I think every every employee of the Sheriff's Department and probably Fire Department practically in the county were there. A great turnout. I didn't stay for the entertainment, but it really, I hope they raised a lot of money. It sure looked like they did. And I really hope those cadets who were badly injured are on the mend. On December 5th, I went downtown and attended the swearing in of our new county supervisor for the third district, Lindsay Horvath, and I want to congratulate her. That was another who's who of county and municipal officials, a ton of people, and really just a very uplifting event. And on Friday, I attended my final SoCal Edison Government Advisory Panel Meeting. And I think they'll be able to get along without me moving forward. Also, Friday night, my family and I went to the Malibu High Christmas Tree Lot where there was entertainment by the Malibu Middle and High School Choir. And that was just a really great community event. I wish it were better attended by our own community. And for anybody who doesn't know, every year, the Christmas Tree Lot is the main fundraiser for the Malibu High Athletic Booster Club. So if you ever wondered why they do that, that's the reason. Okay, so that's my report. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Karen. I've had a fairly busy two weeks. I, I somehow decided to attend the Southern California Association of Governments Economic Review in downtown LA. It was a very interesting six hours. I probably could have gotten by with only two hours of it. But you, once you're there, you stay. I also went to Chief Luna's installation in Los Angeles on a, on another day, which was very nicely done and gave me an opportunity to meet with people from the Sheriff's Department and other members of other cities who are working with us. And I think he's going to be very friendly to the cog, and I would urge that we really redouble our efforts. Karen has done a human's, yeoman's job with the cog for the last years. And we've got to be present as part of the cog. I also got a nice lecture from a gentleman who was on the Calabasas, who represented Calabasas, telling me how important it was that we, we do that. So that was another thing. Not this Sunday, but Sunday before, I went to the art opening where we, I saw Steve Euring. And we also looked at all the art, very high caliber of art about the music industry. It is still open, and of course, it doesn't cost anyone money to go to see it. And I would urge the public to go and take a walk through that gallery. It's amazing what we're able to the caliber of work that we're able to offer them a chance to look at. Yesterday, I was at the Woody Parade, which has been put on by John Zambetti for, I don't know, what is it, 13 years now? Maybe 15? It's always nice to see it. I think they got beat up a little bit by the weather, but they, they, they still had some people who were not afraid to get their cars wet. And that ended up at at Dreamland. So that was, that was very nice, and they had a nice crowd for that. And I also, at Karen's invitation, I, and also the invitation from Southern California Edison, I logged on to the, that panel discussion they had. And kind of was a fly on the wall, learning what goes on with that group. And so looking forward to staying active. Yeah, and representing Malibu everywhere I go and being a good person. Okay. And I think that takes us to item 3A. Did I miss anything?
No, you're at 3A.
Good. So at 3A, we're looking for a staff report on adoption of ordinance number 503U, the California Building Standards Code. And I believe we have Yolanda Bundy.
Yes, good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me this evening. This evening, I'm here to introduce the first reading for our 2022 California Building Codes Standard. Next slide, please. Section 17958 mandates the California Building Standard Commission adopt and publish the California Building Standard Code. This is what we know as Title 24. This happens every three years. The 2022 edition of the codes will be coming to effect statewide in January 1st of 2023. Next slides. The Building Standard Code consists of multiple volumes pertaining to the building's structural, energy, green building code, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical systems. These codes are organized into 12 parts. Plumbing, electrical, and mechanical systems. These codes are organized into twelve parts. Next slides. The building standards follow the National Model Code. What I mean by this, the twenty twenty-two California Building Code will follow the International Building Code. Uh, Edition twenty twenty-one. The California Plumbing Code will follow the Uniform Plumbing Code twenty twenty-one. The California Electrical Code will follow the National Electrical Code twenty twenty. Next slide, please. After the state of California releases the California Building Standards, our local government must pass ordinance. Adopting the codes by reference, which we normally amend in accordance with our local conditions. In order to provide our community with a more locally applicable and efficient regional building standards. Historically, the city of Malibu, along with other local cities and the county. Have adopted an amendment, Los Angeles County Codes. Next slides. Building codes are adopted at the state level and are enforced by local jurisdictions, with the exceptions of public schools and hospitals. Each local building jurisdiction may amend the state codes, providing their amendments. Are more stringent based on findings justified by climatic. Geological, topographical, or environmental conditions of every jurisdiction. A few of the important and more unique findings that we find in our city. Geological, we have earthquake faults, we have expansive soil, we have unstable hillsides. Topographically, we have flat land, but we also have oceans and we have hillsides. Climatic, we have low humidity, high winds because we are so close to the ocean, and we have a marine environment. Next slides, please. For consistency with other county cities, Malibu has joined efforts with other cities' departments to examine. Improve and to examine previous and proposed amendments. The goal is to minimize difference in code language and interpretation. Thereby unifying and streamlining the permitting process for the construction process. Next slides. In this adopting process, we are amended, the city is going to be amending the building, the residential. Existing building, the electrical, the plumbing, the mechanical, and green, and green building code. We will, are proposing to adopt as it is, the energy, the administrative, the standard. The reference standards and the historical building code. As far as the fire code, the county will be adopting in early twenty twenty-three. Therefore, the city will, in the interim, will be adopting the state codes. Next slides. And just to go, there's multiple changes that are happening on this code additions. I'm going to highlight to you three. But I also want to mention that during the month of December, the beginning of December, I was able to put a presentation. That is right now on our website. There was a more detail going over the different changes of the code. Next slides. The first one that I want to bring to your attention is the chapter seven eight, which talks about materials and construction methods. For exterior wildfire exposure. This chapter has been existing in the code for the past fifteen years. The, the only difference that it proposed that it has been changing is that. Any accessory dwelling that is close to the main house. Now needs to fully comply with all of the features required by the state fire marshal. What I mean by this is any structure that is close to the main residence. Needs to comply with windows being uh temper glazing, fire resistant exterior materials. And also a roof that must have a class A fire rating. Next slides. One of the biggest changes that we have seen is also the California essential code changes are adding a new section. That is uh, section R three two seven. This is called aging in place design and fall prevention. This was added to address a specific aging in place design elements and new residential construction. To facilitate access for operational features and also allow to people and families to stay longer in their homes as they're aging. This came as a result of the California Senate Bill two eighty and now has been incorporated in the code. A few of the features and requirements will be a required reinforcement for future grab bars and bathrooms. A specific um, location and heights for outlets, doorbells, so they are accessible. Next slides. And finally, one of the major changes on the code. The California Energy Commission goals is to be electrical dependent. So under this section, this, this new mandate that. The state of California is requiring for a new single family dwellings that are being submitted to our. To our, for our review, they need to have all the utilities and infrastructure ready. To be completely dependent on an electric, electrical dependent. It has electrical cooktop ready, even if you have a gas line, you will also be required to have. The utilities ready to be installed in case you have an electrical uh cooktop. The other one is for the electrical ready for clothes dryers if you're using gas lines. Next slides. I, it's important for me to mention that as we go to the Wolfie Fire Rebuilds. This does not impact to applications that are currently at the review and also under construction. This clearly only applies to new single family dwellings that are going to be submitted for a review. And this was for applications that we see on or after January first of twenty twenty-three. This adoption of the ordinance nu- number five oh three becomes into effect January first of twenty twenty-three. We are recommending that council consider this amendments as their urgency measurements. In absence of urgency legislation, the city would risk having structures built that are not subject to standard design. For original vulnerable fire and seismic activity. That concludes my presentation. I'm open for if you have any questions.
Uh, Bruce, I see your hand.
Yeah, Yolanda, that, that last point's perfect jumping off point, which is, and it's what I have a question about. Can you explain that last point a little? Uh, with a little more detail about what would happen if we don't adopt this because I, it's unclear to me what that meant.
Yeah, and Trevor might be able to uh also add to, to this. Um, the state of Califor- uh, the state of California every three years uh propose changes to the code. If there are minimum code requirements. The city and local jurisdiction can amend the code and make it more stringent, but not ease the regulations. If the city decides not to adopt the codes and amendments this evening, the city will be. Uh, uh, will be falling under completely straightforward to the regulations as state, as the state is writing that, the. The amen, the, the code sections, we will not be able to amend it. The amendments that you are seeing right now are tailored for our geographic, topographic area. What I mean by this, the amendments in regard of uh being more seismic resistant because we have a landslide. Uh, because we're, we're more prone to earthquakes. Um, but Trevor can add more to this um as far as the legislation and how that will be affected if it's not adopted.
Trevor, do you have a line? Yeah, I think you wanted to cover it there. So we, we do want to get this passed tonight so that we can. Um, have our, our particular portions put it in also so that we match the LA County um changes that are made to these codes.
So the, if I understand correctly, then the important part, the reason there's urgency is because of the things we're doing that are above and beyond. What the state is doing, not in order to get the state part of it implemented. It's, it's, it's the separate things that we are now changing. That are more stringent than the state code. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, I know that stringent is that it's, is that it, it matches the local conditions and, and um. The, 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 the local uh conditions and, and requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, do you have a technical question? Before we open it up to the public?
Uh, Kelsey, go first. Your hands up, and I'll come back and ask my question.
I was just raising my hand to let you know that you don't have any speakers signed up for this item, and I don't see any raised hands from the public, so you don't have any public comments.
Well, thank you, Kelsey. Steve, you're on. Ask anything.
Thank you. Yeah, there you go. Just, Yolanda, and I just. And I, you said it, but I just want to make, emphasize this. In terms of projects that are currently sitting in the city. These, this code changes do not apply to those. Is that correct? Because I got a calls and I got an email to add on that subject.
Yes, that is completely correct. This does not apply to current, current projects that are under construction. And that is not only Wolfie Fire, any project that is under construction, because they already have granted their permit applications and their approvals. It also does not apply to uh, um, any, I, any. Any families are coming out back with revisions. Let's say they, they got their approval and now they want to revise the plan. Though their revision will fall under the, the plans that we have, which we approve the, the project. This only applied to new homes that haven't even been submitted to us that are um. That are going to be submitted at the beginning of the year.
So basically, if you're going to submit a project to the city starting January first, you're going to be aware of all these new codes and make sure you got them covered. Gotcha. Yolanda, thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
And in the interest of beating a dead horse, if there's an application in and people are in the process of going back and forth and getting things for the city. They still are under the previous code, correct?
That is correct. Um, yes.
I, I think we, several of us got the same letter.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I see a member of the public. Mary Ann, you're still a member of the public?
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to clarify, it's the applications that are submitted to building safety plan check review, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you, Yolanda.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to close the public hearing, then if we don't have any more speakers.
I'd be glad to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I, quick, what did Mary Ann just carve out in terms of what she said? I didn't understand.
What she was trying to, what she was trying to make it clear is that the city has a planning process and a planning application. And then the city has a building application. Where we're concentrating today is the building application. And so any building applications that are submitted on January first, those are the ones that are going to be. Uh, need to be designed under this new code uh adoption.
So if something's just been submitted to planning, what happened to that? Is that, does that fall under any of this new stuff?
No, uh, if you were uh going through planning and you have, let's say you're planning verification and you're planning approval. The, the guidelines and deadlines do not apply. There are different standards.
The, 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 the building code, the planning code travels by the code in place when the application is complete for the planning process.
They, they, they don't interact with each other. Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll try making a motion again, maybe?
Please, Mikey.
Take a mo- up to ordinance for five oh three. Forty but state code as uh worded here in our recommendation.
A second.
That, to clarify, that's staff's recommendation for the urgency ordinance and the, the, for the introduction of the, of the uh, the regular ordinance.
That is correct.
And I, I do have to read the titles of both of these.
Yes, and we want you to.
All right, the, the first is uh ordinance number five oh three U, an urgency ordinance of the city of Malibu adopting by reference Title twenty-six of the Los Angeles County Code. Incorporating the California Building Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title twenty-seven of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Electrical Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title twenty-eight of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Plumbing Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title twenty-nine, the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Mechanical Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title thirty of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Residential Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title thirty-one of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Green Building Standards Code twenty twenty-two Edition. The California Energy Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title thirty-three of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Existing Building Code twenty twenty-two Edition. The California Fire Code twenty twenty-two Edition, making amendments to said, said codes. Repealing ordinance number four fifty-seven, declaring the urgency thereof, and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Now I have to read the regular ordinance. Which is ordinance number five oh three, an ordinance of the city of Malibu adopting by reference Title twenty-six of the Los Angeles County Code. Incorporating the California Building Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title twenty-seven of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Electrical Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title twenty-eight of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Plumbing Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title twenty-nine of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Mechanical Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title thirty of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Residential Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title thirty-one of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Green Building Standards Code twenty twenty-two Edition. The California Energy Code twenty twenty-two Edition. Title thirty-three of the Los Angeles County Code incorporating the California Existing Building Code twenty twenty-two Edition. The California Fire Code twenty twenty-two Edition, making amendments to said codes. Repealing ordinance number four fifty-seven and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Get a motion in a second. Uh, the, the uh, item has been read. Can we take a, can we, is there any further discussion? Kelsey, will you take the role, please?
Yeah.
I don't know if I heard my name being called, but.
We lost Kelsey.
You there, Kelsey?
I'm so sorry. Can you not hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yuri? Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. That brings us to item three B, adoption of ordinance number five oh six. Update to permitting process for electrical vehicle charging stations. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, you do. Good evening, City Council. I'm here to also introduce to you the first reading to ordinance five oh six. This is in regard of permitting process for the electrical vehicle charging stations. Next slides, please. A little background on this. Uh, Assembly Bill twelve thirty-six came about in two thousand seventeen. Requiring jurisdictions to streamline permitting the process of electrical vehicle charging stations. At that time, it requires jurisdictions with two hundred thousand residents or less. To adopt an ordinance creating an expedited streamlined permitting process for electrical. Electrical vehicle charging stations by September thirtieth of twenty twenty, oh, Sep- twenty seventeen. As a result, the city adopted ordinance four twenty-three on September eleventh of twenty seventeen. Next slides. Last year, the state of California passed Assembly Bill nine seventy. Nine seventy is an updated bill that, that creates a specific timeframes to electrical vehicle charging stations review. This was built on the state's existing permitting streamline, streamlining law. Adding timelines for electrical vehicle charging station applications review and approval. Next slides. In order to comply with this AB nine seventy, the city is proposing the following ordinance. The permitting turnaround times will follow as, was as, are as follow. Five business day after the application is submitted, the city is to, for, for, and if the application is for one to twenty-five electrical vehicle charging station. At a single site, the city will mask. Uh, respond with either corrections within five working days of five business days. If we have an application that have more than twenty five electrical vehicle charging stations, The city has up to ten business days after that submission and application To provide corrections or deem the application completed. Next slides. This state bill also requires The ability to have an electronical, an electronic sumbeo. The city already has that process. It also adds that the city must have a checklist That is needs to be available on our city website, the city already has that. Under that checklist, the city will be able to Examine and plan check for electrical system capacities and loads, Electrical system wiring bonding and overcurrent protection, And also review the infrastructure. Next slides. So this evening, We are recommending That council, please direct staff to sketch, schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance five oh six For January ninth of twenty twenty three on regular city council meeting. Ordinance five oh six, five oh six, if approved, will amend chapter fifteen point thirty six To conform with this statewide requirement on timelines for electrical vehicle charging stations permitting process. And that concludes my presentation, um, I'm here if council has any questions.
Thank you, Yolanda. Do we have any members of the public who've signed up to speak on this?
No, you don't have any speakers signed up for this item, and I don't see any raised hands from the public.
I see a raised hand from Bruce. Bruce, would you like to be the first to comment?
I'll I'll be better than a comment, I'll I'll move that we adopt this proposed ordinance.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Do we open and close the public hearing?
Uh, yes, we can open the public hearing and close it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second now To adopt it, uh, with Bruce made the motion and Mikey seconded it, I see Steve has raised his hand for discussion perhaps?
Now, just to, just a quick question, I mean, this, the ten day timeframe to deliver the approve this stuff, Uh, is Richard feel comfortable he's going to be able to deliver that?
Uh, and so I would, um, I will invite Richard to join us and he can answer that question for you, Councilmember Yuri. The ordinance as proposed uh to you, A it only applies to the building department turnaround times for our review Of the plan checks and applications submitted for construction.
So it doesn't, it doesn't impact Richard at all? Okay, gotcha, then forget the question, thank you.
I do need to read the title of this one as well, we're ready.
Please, Trevor.
This is a ordinance number five oh six that we're introducing, an ordinance of the city of Malibu determining the project is Is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and amending chapter fifteen point three six of title fifteen of the Malibu Municipal Code To include time periods to the electric vehicle charging station permitting process.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, I don't see any other further discussion, Kelsey, will you be kind enough to take the role?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yuri?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item four, the consent calendar. Have any items been pulled from the consent calendar?
You have speakers on two items, items So would like to act on those items, I'd recommend you pull item at four four B nine, the election results. Once the election results are certified, the council will need to adjourn.
I I I don't know that I heard all of what you were saying.
Yeah.
I just heard the part about three B nine, but you said there were two people who wanted to talk about something.
I'm sorry. Four B four and four B six. Both have speakers signed up.
Okay.
Sorry, my having internet issues, that's causing problems.
Sure, the 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 recommended motion is to uh approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of items four B four, four B six and four B nine.
Okay, does, do any members of the council wish to pull any other items? Bruce, I see your hand.
Yeah, I have a question about four B ten, so I'd like to pull that, it'll be.
Pull four B ten as well. Okay. Do I see a motion to?
I'll do it, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, Except item four B four, four B six, four B nine and four B ten.
Okay, does anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
I see a second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items three B four, three B six, three B nine and three B ten. Kelsey, will you be kind enough to take the role?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yuri?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We now are on uh four B four. And I believe that was pulled by a member of the public, so.
Yes, you have two speakers signed up for this item, they are Doug Stewart and Scott Dietrich, we'll hear from Doug Stewart first.
Hi Doug, are you available?
I think I am.
You are.
There we are. Yeah, I, you're gonna find me on two different places, I'm glad Kelsey could find me. All right, uh, good evening, council members, I realize that there are concerns about the recent increase in flu and COVID. It makes starting to hold meetings in person not an easy question to answer. Yet practically every other government body is holding public meetings and many even use a hybrid approach mixing in-person with Zoom. Well, I'd like to start holding the council meetings in public as soon as possible and ideally January ninth. I realize that that may not be practical given the notice periods and staffing issues for city hall. However, unless the governor uh extends the COVID emergency, we have to meet in person after February twenty eighth anyway. Including January ninth, that's only four more meetings not in person. At a minimum tonight, I would first request the council to ask city staff to provide a pathway to starting in-person meetings, at least for the council. Second, I would ask, what are our options for commissions, committees, boards and other bodies other than the council? And third, what are options for future hybrid meetings that seem to be very common now and are probably the future? That's all I got to say, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Doug.
Our next speaker is Scott Dietrich.
Hi Scott. Mister Dietrich, can you hear me?
Uh, I just got the pop up, yes, I can, Paul, thank you. Um, yeah, I I totally agree with Doug, now's the, it's time to go back to in-person And or hybrid meetings. Um, you know, we we can't stay away forever. Um, mostly Uh, when you think of how the council chambers are layout, laid out, In most instances, we can have people separate if they choose to and sit Six feet or whatever the current distance is away, and the same for commission meetings. Um, we meet, most of the commission meetings are in the multipurpose room, and you can certainly spread out there. Um, it's not like you have tons of the public coming in very often. Um, so, you know, it's it's really, I think, time to make this change. Um, we can't uh be at the mercy of the fact that people are getting the flu in fall. That sort of happens every year, and apparently the flu shots are about ten percent effective. Um, you know, on an average, so uh, I got mine. Um, so I do urge the council to go back to um In-person meetings or perhaps hybrid if the staff can organize that, thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
And Mayor.
Kelsey, we lost you again.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment portion of it now, and it's at the council table. Uh, I'd like to just ask uh City Manager McClary, Uh, what would we have to do to host a hybrid meeting? What do we need that we don't have to host hybrid meetings?
Uh, yeah, sure, um, I I think really for for staff, it's just we need a little bit of time just to coordinate that. Um, and we do need to to staff up a bit for those meetings, there there are some procedural things that we would need to work out, but um Um, Uh, but uh, you know, if given direction, we can, we can certainly come up with a timeline on that and go that direction. Uh, I just wanted to re- remind the the council that we do have Um, on the calendar for Jan, for the January ninth meeting, Uh, a discussion of about the return to in-person meetings. Uh, so staff will be prepared to have a full analysis Uh, at that meeting, uh, and uh, we'll be happy to get into all the ins and outs of uh Uh, returning to in-person, uh, and whether we want to do hybrid or not. Um, so we do have that scheduled uh for discussion for the council on the January ninth.
Thank you. Bruce, I see your hand.
Yeah, thanks, um, Trevor, if um, the governor does not extend the state of emergency, Um, are we, are we legally permitted to have hybrid meetings after the expiration of the current uh emergency order?
Yeah, I I I hybrid be allowed, and there's actually an argument that you could continue to meet under A B three sixty one if you continue to make Um, the the local findings if you already declared That the emergency was in place when it started, so there is an argument that you could continue that way as well, that's another option that can be discussed on the night.
Okay, and am I correct that a hybrid meeting would mean all five city council members unless they're out of state or something Are required to be physically present together, but the public has the option of physical attendance or uh virtual attendance?
Yeah, I should clarify when, when I heard your question, that's what I was assuming when you said hybrid after the the close of that, if you had A B three sixty one, If you did make those findings and the council could appear remotely as well as we are now, both the public and them, Otherwise, you'd be able to have the public just um, you know, call in remotely or appear by Zoom, that would be um, an allowed option. Um, other council members, there are the new rules about teleconferencing, if you don't make the A B three sixty one findings, it's a little bit different, we'll talk about that as well.
I'll move to um approve this item until we make a contrary decision in the couple weeks.
Hey, we have a motion To approve three B four, do I see your second?
I'll second.
Your motion is second to prove item three B four, Kelsey, will you take the role, please?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Yuri?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item three B six. Who pulled this?
You have one speaker signed up, if you're ready to hear from them?
We are very ready to hear from.
It is Don Schmitz.
Hi, Don, I see your hand.
Good evening, council members, audio check, am I coming through?
Well, you are coming in.
All right, listen, you've got very important business to do tonight, and the congratulations to uh the council, both outgoing and incoming. Um, speaking on this item, I'll keep it very brief, I want to uh first of all, start off by complimenting our city, complimenting uh Uh, the Planning Director, Richard Malika, complimenting uh our city manager, Stephen Clary. Uh, this is obviously excellent work that's going on, and this is in response To the comments by the council members that they wanted to see quantifiable, qualifiable metrics For what the reforms and the investment that the city council has invested in to reform the planning department processes. These are really good metrics the staff has put together, however, I do take issue with metric number one, which talks about giving response to an application for completeness within thirty days. It says currently the city is is responding back on completeness thirty five percent of the time within thirty days And targets uh getting back to applicants within thirty days, seventy five percent of the time. I would just point out that every other city and every other county and regulatory body in the state of California Gets back a hundred percent of the time within thirty days on completeness or asking for additional information. I think that Malibu is no different, I think that we've got excellent people in the planning department, I think that we can Give that timely response, just like every other uh community does. And then there's an enormous omission in regards to these metrics, the other metrics are all very good, But they're all very uh low line uh or low hanging fruit issues for low level review. What is not included in the metrics for the council's uh uh monitoring is full-blown applications And how quickly or not quickly coastal development permits will be brought forward to the planning commission for a final decision. Uh, again, everywhere else in the state of California by operational law, once it's deemed complete, that should be happening within a hundred and eighty days. Uh, we've documented that uh uh exponentially, uh, the the city of Malibu is taking much longer, two and a half years, Three years, four years. That really is the ultimate goal for the reforms, that is the meat and potatoes, the main body Of the permit process and planning department uh for the city of Malibu. So I would urge that uh you direct your staff to include uh the final decision For full-blown coastal development permits, how long does it take For us to get that to the planning commission for a final decision? So uh with that, I would conclude my comments, I'm available for questions should you have them, and again, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Don.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, would any members of the council like to address the matter? Mister Yuri?
Thank you, Paul, um, I was the one who I think pushed to get these metrics in place. Uh, I I I understand everybody's desire to, you know, to go from zero to a hundred and eighty miles an hour in a in a short period of time. It's not going to happen, I, at least in my mind, this, this is a first step in terms of starting to provide some Evidence that we're, we can improve what's going on, we can demonstrate that to the public. So my my take is I think they did a reasonably good job of setting some targets. I think we got a chance to see what's going to happen, we can, you know, adjust these as we go down the line. Um, So I am, I'm not, I'm happy with the targets he set, and I'm hoping we can meet those by the, we get to the June timeframe. Now, is Richard available? Are you around here anyplace, Richard?
Yeah, yes, I'm here, uh, I hope you can hear me.
I got you, just a quick question, I I assume that what's going to happen is we're going to start Start at January first, right, so January first, we're going to measure all of the new projects that come in against these metrics that you have in place, is that a fair assessment?
Yes, that is correct, council member, so starting January of twenty twenty three, And when these new projects come in, we're going to, I mean, we're tracking everything, but the idea is that's a new projects in the door. Can we get them a response in thirty days?
Okay, so all of these metrics will be compared against new projects coming in starting January first, gotcha?
Yes.
I have one last, and I think you look, whether good metrics or bad metrics, they're measuring something is better than measuring nothing. So I'm I'm in favor of this, I have one question, the the Money we allocated for the additional con- contract planners was designed to also help us clear up the backlog. Right, the stuff we got in place already, and and None of these metrics is going to help me measure how effective we are in doing that. Now, you, I don't want you to do anything tonight, but think about how we, I mean, I, if you can come up with some, you must have some way to measure What's going on with the backlog of projects that you have, if somehow you can incorporate whatever that measurement is Into some of these metrics and bring that back to us, I just, I just think that's the other thing, and that's what we're paying the money for. So let's make sure we're actually, you know, accomplishing that, so if you can come up with some way to show us how that's going, how that's progressing, I would be very happy with that, other than that, I'm happy with what you got here, Richard, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Steve. Bruce, I see your hand.
Well, this is a receive and file, do we need to vote on it? If if so, I'll move that we receive and file it, no, just gets, just happens?
It it's just a receiving file, so unless there's objection, the the uh, the mayor may may just receive and file it.
Okay. Well, let's receive and file this. Unless there's other comments someone wants to make. I don't see any. So I believe since we want to do three B nine last, I'm going to three B ten, is that correct?
Yeah, you can do either ten first or you can do nine and ten together.
Okay, we'll do nine and ten together.
A question about, they're they're totally separate. A question about, they're, they're totally separate items. I have a question about ten.
Okay, let's just do, let's, let's just do the question on three B ten.
Yeah, this is real simple. Well, I, I assume you don't have any public comment. Kelsey, is that correct?
No, you don't have any public speakers.
Okay. Trevor, do we need to technically close the public?
I would, I always preferred if the mayor does close the public comment.
I would be glad to close the public comment, and that brings us to uh, the commission, the council to discuss transaction and use tax administration.
Yeah, I, I, I raised this. I just have one question. The report states, the contract under part of things say HDL would also provide audit services for twenty-five percent of the initial amount of new TUT revenue received by the city as a result of audit and recovery work, worked, performed. Um, what does that mean?
Mayor and, and council member Silverstein, so uh, what that essentially means is HDL would go out, do audit and discovery. Um, if they are able to find or capture additional revenue dollars uh, that we otherwise wouldn't have through that process, they're able to recoup twenty-five percent. That's essentially their, their fee, but that's a benef- in essence, a benefit to the city because the more they go seek out, uh, the better off we are.
So they're bounty hunters, which is great.
No, that's, that's only for um, money that's generated above what they've already reported. Correct. New, new revenue, newfound revenue through audit and discovery.
Can, can you explain the difference between what they won't get twenty-five percent of and what they will get twenty-five percent of?
So handling our normal TUT fees and revenue that uh, they've identified already the, the proper payments or where the sources are, that would just be the standard monthly fee. So it would only be anything that we haven't found before or uh, uh, taxpayers who are supposed to be paying that are newly discovered, uh, that would only be, it's the increment in addition to. So it wouldn't be uh, our ongoing amount.
Okay, and how does that twenty-five percent fee compare to the services, this similar service they provide to other cities?
That's pretty common for their contracts.
Okay, thank you.
So this would primarily be people who are advertising with a, a, a non-cooperative uh, uh, platform, basically. Or just doing it on Craigslist or things like that. Without, without any, any platform involved. These are people who don't have a permit from the city of Malibu, basically.
For, uh, to an extent, you, uh, we might be confusing two different types of taxes there, Mayor. Um, TOT. Yeah.
This is TUT. This is our new tax.
Correct, correct. Not TOT. So TOT is transient occupancy tax, which is I think what you, you might be referring to, and that would be more for hotel, short-term rentals, that type of thing. Uh, this is more of a sales tax.
Okay.
Well, not that, I don't make pro-ness, but Joseph, what, what would be an example of somebody that would be caught through this? Um, that we otherwise wouldn't have received the tax from, that we're now going to pay twenty-five percent of the tax to have caught?
Uh, try, trying to generalize, it would typically occurs with their audit and discovery. So if you were to have a business who hasn't been reporting properly on what they sold, um, they go through that process. They're looking at state records. They look down at our, at actual receipts and they find that, they discover that. Now they go out, uh, audit that, that business, recoup those dollars. Now we're, we're receiving twenty, uh, we're receiving more revenue, but they're taking a twenty-five percent fee.
Okay, that's, that's a, that's a helpful example. And then what would happen the next year? Would, would we be receiving a hundred percent unless they didn't comply again?
Correct. Yeah, it would be a new baseline.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'll, I'll move that we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to approve item number four B ten? Was that the second, Mikey? We have a motion in the second to approve item three, four B ten. Kelsey, would be kind enough to take the role.
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Uring?
Yes.
In Austria.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That brings us to item three B nine, which is a resolution to adopt to reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, and declaring the result and such other matters as provided by law.
And for the record, it's four B nine.
Four, why do I keep, oh, you're correct, four B nine. Do we have any members of the public who's lined, signed up to speak on this?
No speakers for this item.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. Do we have a motion to go forward with item four B nine?
I'll move that we accept the results of the election and all the other ancillary things that are within this item.
It's a staff's recommendation adopting the resolution.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
A motion in the second to approve item number four B nine. Kelsey, will you take the role?
Mayor Pro Tem Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Uring?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any uh, presentations to outgoing council people?
Yes, first we have a few videos from other public officials that will be played. Were you all able to hear me?
We were able to hear you.
Hey Karen and Mikey, it's Kelly Honig. I'm up in Seattle. I didn't want to miss an opportunity to record a goodbye video for both of you. I'm so sad you guys are leaving the council. I know it's a huge loss to Malibu, but I understand and I wish you so much free time and fun time to uh, spend with your families and your friends. And I thank you for all of your service to your city and all of the service to the COG, which was huge, um, especially you Karen this past year. Um, I just uh, think you guys are going to be such a loss to Malibu. I, I truly believe that, but I understand. And I wish you peace, happiness. And Karen, I also wanted to say to you especially that, um, you know, as part of our women mayors group, couldn't have done it without you. Um, so glad that we have gotten to renew our friendship of over twenty years and um, best to both of you. Good luck. Um, you won't need it because you're both awesome. And thanks again, and I'm sorry I can't be there in person for your very last meeting, but again, thank you for your service to your city and your community. And you guys rock. Happy Thanksgiving to both of you. Bye.
Hey. Uh, do we have any members of the public who've signed up?
Karen, it's Terry. I just want to thank you and join your family and friends uh, as they congratulate you on your four years of service with the city of Malibu. Um, and especially would like to thank you for the four years that you spent as Malibu's representative to the Los Virginas Malibu Council of Governments Governing Board. I really enjoyed working with you and appreciated the leadership that you brought to the Council of Governments, especially this last year when you served as president. And uh, we had a couple of um, issues that you dealt with uh, in a very professional manner, and I, I was just um, very impressed all around and just want to join again with all of your friends to say thanks for your service uh, on Malibu and a personal thanks from the Council of Governments. Terry Dipple from the Los Virginas Malibu Council of Governments, I wanted to say thank you for the uh, opportunity to work with you as the uh, alternate governing board member to the COG and the leadership that you showed on a number of issues, especially the homeless issue. Uh, really appreciate your compassion and support. And just want to join all your family and friends and supporters to say thanks for four years on the Malibu City Council, and it was a pleasure working with you.
Hey, do we have any members of the public who've signed up to speak?
Yes, we have three members of the public signed up. They are E. Barry Haldeman, Howard Rudske, and Marissa Coughlin. We'll hear from Barry Haldeman first.
Are you available, Barry?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I just wanted to thank Mikey and Karen for all the work that they did. I know it's a very big personal commitment to become a council person. And um, I know at one point, one of them said to me that uh, they don't go to a pla- some places anymore because they just get mobbed by people who ask them questions. So it's a twenty-four hour job, no matter what anybody says. And I uh, appreciate all that they've done and the personal commitment they've made. Uh, and I wish them all the best of luck and really hope with all of their knowledge that they don't disappear from uh, Malibu in terms of participating in all of the issues that we have. I know it's been a difficult time, but uh, I, I am hopeful that with the new city council, who I congratulate both of them, uh, we will have a uh, we will join together and, because we have a lot of common enemies and so um, uh, but I really appreciate the dedication of Mikey and Karen and what they've done. And uh, and uh, Paul, since you're, I guess, going out as mayor today, I appreciate that you just got it right. You finally learned how to do it all. It's very well done and uh, we will miss you as mayor. So uh, congratulations to everybody and, and thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Our next speaker is Howard Rudske.
Mr. Rudske, are you available?
I, I am.
We hear you.
Mikey and Karen, right after you were elected, Woolsey Fire hit, and if that wasn't bad enough, COVID. With all that, you guys accomplished so much in a very dignified manner. And if that wasn't enough, when you both knew that you weren't going to run for a second term, you put together a framework for school separation that took the city farther than it's ever been before with a clear path to get there. Malibu owes you both huge debt of gratitude, and I personally thank you for all you've done. You should be very proud of yourselves. Doug and Mary Ann, congratulations on being elected to the city council. You guys have big shoes to fill, and I'm sure you're up to the task. Mayor Grisanti, you have represented Malibu with honor, dignity, and humility over the last couple of years in the eyes of the world. For that, a well-deserved thank you. To the incoming city council members, Malibu has a lot of critical issues in front of us. We have a new supervisor and sheriff to start a relationship with. I believe you're up to the challenge, and we look forward to your accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Our next speaker is Marissa Coughlin.
Hi, Marissa. Are you available?
Yes, I am. Good evening. Thank you. Um, I want to uh, honor and congratulate Karen and Mikey. Um, knowing how they've been so involved in the community for all the years they've lived here, superseded all the passion and hard work they brought to the council. Um, I've talked to many people in this town from, who've lived here recently and gotten to know you and have lived here for a long time, and everyone has concurred that you've been acting in a way that's made the community proud of all the effort that you've put in on behalf of, of us. Everybody knows, as do I, how hard it is on family life and efforts. And no good deed, as they say, goes unpunished, which you also experienced. And there are those of us that know the efforts that you put in, and we really appreciate it. We're lucky now because we'll be able to actually see you out and about and talk to you and not have to ask you any questions about, except about family and children. And Mr. Grisanti, to you, sir, a man who I spent many years with, with his wife's permission at chili cook-offs and other events. Um, thank you for all your effort, for all that you do, and I really appreciate it. You make it um, uh, fun to live here, enticing to live here, hard to live here. And, but it's all a loving community, and I hope with the new council members coming in, that they will carry that, that banner forward and, and bring us together like we were before cityhood. That's what I'm really looking for, that loving community where we all liked each other just for who we were, for what we thought and what we did, and brought nothing, no other opinions to the matter. Thank you all. Really appreciate all your effort. Thank you.
You said, uh, do I close the public portion now?
That was our final speaker.
Okay. If I may, I'd like to take just a moment to, to thank Mikey and Karen individually. Mikey, I wanted, uh, we've known each other for a while, and I, I really appreciate the way you welcomed me to the neighborhood and uh, got me involved with the Fire Brigade and the Arson Watch. And I really uh, have appreciated your help and support during the last two years I've been involved, and I really appreciate immensely what you and Karen have managed to accomplish with the school separation. I, I know that you've been laboring on it a long time, and that's to both of you, a, a very long time. And I know Karen was laboring on it from the beginning of days of amps and probably before that. But it's, it's been, uh, it's wonderful that we have a framework now, and I'm hoping that we are able to check off all the boxes in the next eighteen months and uh, arrive at the finish line. And Karen, uh, I gotta say that you are, have consistently been correct on any issue I've asked you about and issues I haven't even thought about. So I really can't tell you how much I appreciated uh, your counsel and advice. And I'm not gonna let you off the hook just because you're not on the city council anymore. So uh, I'm sure that you will continue to have conversations, both of you, with all your friends and neighbors and have many opinions which will be valuable to me. So I'll be able to ask both of you about a question this, from now on. So looking forward to it. Okay, and I think that now I am, I get to allow you to make your own remarks. I don't know who wants to go first, Mikey or Karen?
Up to you, Karen. I'll go first or second?
Uh, it doesn't matter to me at all. I, I'll give it a shot and maybe you can help me, um, inevitably the risk of, of uh, going through thank yous is, is leaving someone out. Um, but the first thing I want to do is say thank you to you, Mikey. Uh, we came into this at the same time. Uh, we actually met for the first time as opponents in the campaign, and um, we knew a lot of people in common, but we didn't know each other. And I'm proud of the campaign we ran, for starters. Um, it's been great working with you, uh, going through everything that we did, literally trial by fire three days after we got elected and everything that, that brought with it. Um, Paul, thank you for serving as mayor two terms in a row. Um, just thanks for your uh, level-headedness and your diplomacy and um, thanks for trying to keep the meetings moving. As difficult as that has been at times, I really want to say thank you to everybody at the city. The staff, uh, former staff members who helped pave the way uh, to get the current staff members where they are. I would say particularly with our reserve. That's something the entire city should be really happy about and very proud of. So um, I don't want this to sound like an Academy Awards speech, but I do want to thank some people by name. So uh, let me start with Steve McClary. You've had a tough job, and I just uh, thank you for the way that you handle it. Joe Tony, hit the ground running and just keep doing what you're doing. Elizabeth Shabelson, you're going to be hugely missed at the city, and I will miss working with you, and I really wish you the best of luck with everything. You've been an incredible resource uh, on many different things. The other department heads, Richard Malika, Rob DeBeau, Yolanda Bundy, Susan Duñez, Kristen Riesgo, Kelsey Pettyjohn, thank you all for what you do. Uh, and, and I will say, we probably don't know the half of it. All I know is when I get my um, my agenda packet every two weeks, I know that hundreds of hours of work have gone into it. Trevor, thank you. Thanks for your depth of knowledge, your breadth of knowledge, your, um, your diplomacy and your good humor. Uh, it's just, it's just been great to work with you. I would like to thank all of the people who supported me during my campaign. I'd like to thank all the constituents. Um, we're in this together. And I'd like to thank also the affected parties who have paid attention to the city because we have a lot of people in unincorporated LA County. All of the city issues affect them. They don't get to vote on them. Um, I want to thank all my commissioners. You guys have been great. I probably should have checked in with you more, but if I didn't trust you so much, uh, I would have felt the need to. So Parks and Rec, Alicia Peak, Cultural Arts, Julia Holland, Planning Commission, Jeff Jennings, Public Works, Wade Major, Public Safety, Doug Stewart. Uh, to anyone listening, a word of caution, be careful if you take a commission position. You don't know where that might, uh, lead you in the future. Uh, Wastewater Advisory Commission, Nick Barsakini. And I would like to thank my two appointees to the homelessness task force, Chris Frost and Josh Spiegel. Some other people I would like to just give a huge thank you to for the work that they do and the approach that they've taken really as teachers, not as adversaries. Right off the bat, Poison Free Malibu, Keon and Joel Schulman. They really took the time to educate me and so many other people so that we understood the issues and, and could work on them in partnership with them. At the risk of leaving somebody out or, or reading the entire city roster, I do want to also thank Matt Meyerhoff, Doug Clevenger, Adrian Fernandez, Luis Flores, Miriam Woodrow, Alex Montano, Parker Davis, Mario Reyna, Mahan Amerkian and Christie Rector. They will miss you at the front desk, but the city's, I'm sure, happy to have you, uh, in your new position. I want to give a huge thank you to Gabriel Graham, uh, the outreach coordinator at the People Concern. He's really an unsung hero in this community and I'm really happy I bumped into him a couple of days ago and got to say something to him in face, uh, face to face in person. Uh, I'd like to thank our partners at Pepperdine University. It's just been a pleasure getting to know them and getting to do some of the work that we've done with them. Probably the team I worked with the most, the school district separation team. Mikey, my ad hoc partner and the team, Christine Wood, Latonya Kirk Carter. Again, Elizabeth Shabelson, our financial experts, Kathy Domenico and Terry Ryland and Steve McClary, you've been a huge part of that team as well. I'm sure you know that. It's been my honor to serve, uh, on the Lost Virginist Malibu Council of Government this past year as president and I really want to thank Terry Dipple, uh, who, uh, was on video a few minutes ago. He's the executive director and he's been such a huge force making the job of the rest of the governing board very easy. Uh, I want to thank the governing board partners there, uh, Aniko Gold from Hidden Hills, Kelly Honig from Westlake Village, Alicia Weintraub from Agora Hills and Chris Anstead from Calabasas. Uh, I want to congratulate again our new supervisor, Lindsay Horvath and I'm sure you all will do as much as you can to get to know her better and form a very solid working partnership with her. I want to also thank the people that have been the backbone for us at Supervisor Kewell's office, Tessa Charnofsky and Lisa Mandel. Uh, our new sheriff, Robert Luna, I have a huge amount of confidence in him and I'm really happy for the city uh, that you all will be working with him and his team. Uh, at Lost Hills, Captain C2 and our liaison Lieutenant Carr, thank you both for all the work that you do. Uh, Chief Smith and community liaison Megan Courier, thank you so much. Uh, we couldn't, we couldn't sleep at night without LA County Fire, so thanks for all the work that you do. Um, California Cities, our representative Jeff Kiernan, Contract Cities, Marcel Rodarte, our, our library staff, Melissa Stallings and her team and, um, the library, county library commission, uh, the chair Cory K. Calais and all of the commissioners from the five supervisory districts. I want to give a personal shout out to the VOPs. They are also unsung heroes. Remember, they're volunteers. I hate hearing complaints about their work. Uh, I just want to say thank you to Mark Russo, to everybody on that team. You guys have done more than any of us will ever know, getting up in the middle of the night and all the work that you do. Everybody at CERT, which includes Paul and his wife Sarah, uh, Arson Watch, which includes Mikey, thank you. And there's another couple of people I want to say thank you to somebody who's had a huge positive influence on me and I wish, um, if it weren't for COVID, I could have gone to more events. But at USC, the Saul Price School of Public Policy and the Executive Director for Executive Education, Frank Zerunian, he's just been just a fountain of information and just a force for, for good, uh, for myself and a lot of other, uh, elected officials. I strongly encourage anybody on the council to get involved in that program, uh, when the opportunity arises again. And Frank Zerunian, with all of those responsibilities, is also a city council neighbor, city council member of Rolling Hills Estates and he currently serves as the mayor. Last but not least, my friends and my family. Um, the one person who's never missed a council meeting, my husband Cameron. Not sure how he did it, but he stayed awake along with all of us through every meeting in person and on Zoom. Uh, my kids, their significant others, even my pets who've barked every time I turn my mute off uh, and all my friends, too many to name and I just want to thank you all. So it's been a very memorable four years and, uh, four years was just enough. So it's time to move on and I really wish Doug and Mary Ann the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you Karen. Mikey?
That was fantastic Karen. Um, I'm just gonna say, and everyone said Karen said too, because that list was amazing. Um, that was fantastic. Um, for me tonight is really in my heart about 12 years. It's been 12 years ago, something like that. I became a Public Works Commissioner and it was fascinating. I learned a ton about how a city works. And, um, I had great mentors that, uh, drove me around, Steve Karsh namely. He was, uh, Chair of our commission and going blind at the time. So I'd offer to pick him up at his house and, and then in turn he'd drive, we'd drive around Malibu and he'd tell me how dewatering wells work and just all the nitty gritty of a city and I was absolutely fascinated by it. The better part was Steve used to be my landlord at one time and I hated him at the time. And, uh, as he got older, fell in love with that gruff old guy who told some amazing stories that he would not want me to repeat. Um, but that was my entry into City Hall and, um, then it was on to the planning commission for about seven years. And that was a fascinating lesson in also how a city works and, uh, an incredible experience. It, it is a ton of work and I can see why, uh, it can be hard to find great people sometimes. Uh, I know a lot of candidates scramble to figure that out. And then on to the city council for four years. Um, so I feel like I've had this amazing opportunity to be a part of the city when Jim Thorson was our city manager. And, uh, then of course the amazing Reva Feldman for quite a few years. And, and then incredibly fortunate to have Steve McClary as our city manager during those 12 years and, um, to spend time with each of you has been educational, inspiring. Wonderful and difficult at the same time and I really appreciate each and every city manager that I have worked with. And the department heads, so, so many people over the years. I'm not gonna try and go to the incredible depth that Karen did. She's great at it, but certainly all these years of, of knowing Richard and Rob and, um, I just, what a journey, what a journey on doing so many things and all the other department heads. Yolanda is a, is a blessing to the city. Working with Jesse was great. Now Kristin's here. Um, I'm gonna totally forget names here. Matt Meyerhoff, we went through a lot during the fires, you know, we were talking a huge amount then. You know, and, and I think too in the background, the amount of time I spent with Alex and Parker, for example, and Miriam and Renee and you know, and, and of course Elizabeth and now Kelsey and, uh, and Kelsey, thank you for the delivery today at my house. There's, I was actually gonna eat a slice of the cake she brought while I was sitting here, but I forgot to get it ready or I would be eating cake while talking to you. Um, but so many amazing people, uh, Adrian, Christie, it, it, it goes, uh, Mario, it just goes on and on. Um, also the great for, fortune, uh, to be on council and on planning, uh, with Christie Hogan. And, um, she taught me a huge amount, um, and I'm forever grateful. And, and then Trevor, so, and thank you Trevor. Um, both have been incredible partners in trying to figure out very, very difficult issues. And, and I've learned a lot through them on how you go about doing that successfully. Um, cause without them, I managed to try and do a few things unsuccessfully. So, um, that process is, uh, is big. And then of course, the whole entire school separation team, which Karen talked about so, about so eloquently. That intense group I got the very, very lucky to be a part of, um, in my last couple of years on council, very fortunate there. And of course, my commissioners, uh, Mark Wetton, Lance Simmons, I mean, I'll, I love Mark, he's a great friend of mine. I, I love Lance, you know, that the fact he's my commissioner and, uh, we were in an election against each other. And then I just thought about it after the election and called him up and said, hey, why don't you help me out? And, uh, we've become really good friends. I feel blessed by that. Uh, Barry, um, you know, thank you Barry for, for stepping in when Kathy Elden, Eldon exited. Um, both amazing humans, uh, Kaylee Jenner, thank you so much, Norm Haney and, uh, who would really, no, I don't even know if Norm's, I don't even think his commission ever met. Wastewater Commission, but thank you for being there and also being a great resource to me and, uh, spending time with me as needed over the many years, Norm. Um, and then of course, um, Chris Frost, legendary Chris Frost, just, uh, I already spoke about this before during his commendation, but I asked him to step up when he'd be, you know, when I appointed him and he did beyond that, he pushed me to another level. And, uh, the amount of things we got done and, and now things we've worked on is, I'll never forget and notable. Absolutely amazing. Um, also, um, one of the things that made a huge difference, I think probably at every city councilor is sort of their citizen team. And, um, minus citizen team, it meant everything to me. Some were more involved and some came in as occasionally, but without a great team of which I'd say mine was between 25 and 50 people telling me what was going on, what they were seeing in Malibu, what they were concerned with or what they were excited about. You know, it wasn't all bad things. Sometimes it was great events and, and different types of things. Without that team of people that, uh, trusted me enough to, to work with me and, and push me and, and strategize with me, uh, just so much of what I've been able to get done simply wouldn't have happened. It's just impossible to, to work in a silo successfully in my opinion. So I, I appreciate all those people. Um, and, uh, Karen started out this way, but yeah, Karen, our journey together has been remarkable. Like we didn't, and I remember sort of almost, my phone did. And during that month, my phone rang, I looked at it and it said Karen Fair. I did not know Karen Fair. But I knew she was running for, I knew she was maybe gonna run for city council. So I picked up the phone and I said, so they, they talked to you into it, huh? They beat you down till you said yes, and she laughed and said yes, and that was the first moment we ever talked to each other. Um, it's been an incredible journey Karen, it's, um, you know, we have talked a huge amount in four years and, uh, you know, we've laughed, we've argued, we've done everything and, um, I would not want to do this journey any other way. So I will always be grateful for, uh, when we got elected, right away, I had a couple of things I wanted to work on and, um, it had to do with homelessness and affordable or workforce housing and you just said, let's do it. And I'll never forget that. I thought, wow, that's amazing. You know, that you just like looked at me and said yes and, uh, start of a beautiful partnership. So thank you very much. Um, and the support from my, my real friend group, my close friends means everything to me. Thank you for so many people reaching out these last few days. I really appreciate it. And of course, my family. Me being on city council is, uh, pretty all consuming. I also have another full-time job. So to say that my family paid a price for me being on council is an understatement. I, a great many nights, just like tonight, um, have dinner and come to my office and work, whether it was city or my other job. And my wife would be out, Maggie be out, doing what she does or, and when the kids lived at home, doing what they were doing. So I want to say to my family, I appreciate the support. It means a great deal to me because I am passionate about the city and passionate about trying to help make a positive impact on the city. So a grateful thank you to my, to my family. I want to talk about just a few of the items that I'm really happy to have made a lot of progress on or have gotten done. And that I didn't want to make a very big list, but there's a few things. Number one, I am always be glad that I brought forward the fee waiver immediately after the fire. There was huge financial implications to the city, but I still very strongly believe it was the right thing to do. I am very pleased for everything I tried to do to help people that burned down. As I was the only planning commissioner on, and I was a recent planning commissioner that was on council, it was an overwhelming, um, I don't know, honor, I guess, to be in contact with so many people that needed help and visiting so many properties after the fire. Uh, I know I've visited probably 200 different properties that burned down, trying to figure out how to help people. An absolutely overwhelming time and traumatizing time for the city. And I was glad to do everything I could do during, but still continues, but during the rebuild. Um, that'll, I'll never forget that, uh, overwhelming and painful experience for, for everybody. Um, I'm also, uh, it's, it's fun to look back at things a little hindsight. With hindsight, I'm really glad I brought forward the TOT tax increase when we just saw the numbers that it brought in, um, in our last, uh, NF meeting to see that I came up with something that's gonna help bring in millions of dollars to the city and it's all paid by the millions of tourists that come here. That, that felt good. Um, I'm really pleased about that. And I appreciate the voters supporting me on that. And, uh, actually I shouldn't say that. The voters supported me even though I forgot to campaign for because there was so much happening at the time. I got brought that forward. We had so many things going on at the city. I didn't really campaign on it, but the, the citizens, um, took care of that for me. Probably the biggest lesson I ever had in the city and I am forever grateful to Joel and Keon was bringing forward, after years and years of other council members trying and working on it, but bringing forward the pesticide ban. And to me, it was a huge lesson and, and how to, how to get difficult things done. It took me months and months and months to figure out. And it took cooperation with the coastal commission. It took working with Richard Malika. Thank you, Richard. You were amazing. It took working with the Department of Pesticide Control. It took help from Los Angeles County Council. It took, it, it took a huge amount of people, but it really took Joel and Keon. And, and what they, the amount of years they spent and, and I think Karen said it so well, the amount of patience they had with me. I had a thousand questions of them and I re-asked them time and time again. Cause at the time, we were told this could not be done and it was illegal. And with their help though, we found a path forward. And with them on those meetings with the coastal commission, I'll never forget them. And I, I thank you. I think you both are down to Mexico and not hearing this. And I hope you're in Mexico because that'd be great. But thank you very much. And the last item I want to talk about is school district separation. I feel fortunate to have come along to join a group that had been working together for a long time. And I came in clearly as an outsider, but an outsider that went to Juan Cabrillo, who went to Malibu Park Junior High. So I had the background. And actually, McLaren and I kind of came in together. And I think, you know, being able to bring in an outside perspective is sometimes an advantage. And I think, Steve, I appreciate your perspective was always very good. Cause you and I had not lived through the, the trauma and drama and the intense amount of hard work that the team before us had been doing. We just got to kind of skate in and see it where it was. And so I feel very fortunate on that. There's, there's a lot of work to do there still. But to bring it to this point is it, it, it does feel good. It does feel good that we got there. And so thanks to everybody involved in that. That's huge, huge for the city of Malibu. Absolutely gigantic. But I also want to finish my time about what I didn't get done. Because I am hoping that the council that's sitting in my view here and the council members about to join that will be inspired on at least a few of these. When I left, I was asked to carry forward some things that hadn't been done, particularly by Skylar, and I was honored to do so. I assumed when I was running and actually the day I got elected that the first thing we do is have the land figure out how to have the meetings and what to do with the city land. That was my assumption. And then this fire thing happened and all that went out the window. And that includes an art center. I know it was brought up earlier. And we just didn't have the bandwidth. It wasn't, it couldn't be the highest priority anymore. It just simply, when you have hundreds and hundreds of people out of their homes and trying to rebuild, which is a nightmare. It just wasn't. So I hope the new council can find a way to start to make progress on that as they go forward. I know it's not today and tomorrow, but I think, I think we're getting there. I think, you know, we still got people to get in their homes. We still got a lot of overwhelm, but I think we're getting there. And I think that'd be a great goal for this council. Other thing I had written, it's mostly done for anyone who's interested and when the timing's right. Plastic bottle ban. I want to be a city that bans, bans single-use plastic bottles. And it's written, Trevor knows where it is. You can dig it up. I think it's a really worthy goal for our city and who we are as a city. I think it's something we, that we can do that kind of takes a lead that needs to, that we need to lead on. Something we should do. Other item that I picked up from Skylar that's now on the agenda, but not started yet is Solar City Hall. Just bring that up one more time. I'm a big believer in it. I have solar in my house. I don't even notice when the power goes out anymore. And it'll pay a cent to charge my car. Solar does that. I'm a big believer. I just thought I'd just give a plug for Solar City Hall. I'm just a big fan of that. Other thing we've discussed and it's kind of halfway there. And I know Bruce agrees with me is sort of fix what our outside dining codes look like. It is so nice to sit outside, but it's, there's tricky parts of it. They're not all the same. So I know there's work to be done on that and I hope somebody wants to pick that up while it's still pickupable. It'd be so sad to see all these outside dinings go back in. I think our codes have missed this for a long time and it should have been something that was more encouraged and I don't know. I'm not sure of the answer. So since I didn't get, it was Trevor and I worked on it for a long time and, but at some point, yeah, just bandwidth for the city didn't happen there. And I hope that can happen. Here's a really, really important one that Trevor and I have talked about a lot. And this one's pretty easy. And I think this council has the, has the wherewithal to do it, but there is no maximum TDSF on beachfront lots. I brought this up time and time and time again. I think it's time to figure that out because we could literally have Miami Beach on Malibu. And Malibu, massive mansions on the beach that we can't do anything about. To a degree, we should fix that. Lastly, here's a little known one for anyone who really wants to rally the whole fire, fire protection, fire. Being ready for the next fire, something called a Haney hydrant. A Haney hydrant is developed by Matt Haines, who lives up of, up, he lives up Crow Canyon. And they have a bunch of them up there. They're like a small fire hydrant at the front of your house before it goes into your house system. It's a one-inch line, like a wildfire line. And you put them in, it's a couple of my neighborhood. So when a fire comes, you literally can have a good quality one-inch line and save your house. Cause I can tell you fighting the fire, way too many houses just were not ready and I could not save them because there was no ability to get any water. So I don't know cities ever done a Haney hydrant type, type of idea. If anyone's interested in pursuing, I'd be glad to talk to you about that. So that's it. I am just filled with gratitude. The city of Malibu means everything to me. As you, I've said a number of times and so you know, I'm born and raised here. I was adopted and raised here. I am the luckiest guy on the face of the earth. I am absolutely have a lottery ticket that doesn't exist in life. It has been my honor of a lifetime to be elected and have an opportunity to try and make a positive difference in the city of Malibu. And I thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Thank you, Karen. It is my honor to now adjourn the 16th city council. The 16th city council is hereby adjourned. We will reconvene in eight minutes. And adjourn and reconvene as the 17th city council. So once again, thank you, Karen and Mikey. And I'll see you guys all at eight forty-three.
Not all of us.
Not all of us. Okay.
Enjoy all. Thank you.
Hey, it's now eight forty-three and I would like to reconvene the 17th city council. We will now be admit, each of the people who is joining the council has selected someone to administer the oath to them. And unfortunately, I don't know who is administering the oath. And Mary Ann, you're next to the top of the list here, so I'm going to pick you first. Have you selected someone to administer the oath to you?
I have my daughter Jess Murray, excuse me, Jess Manson.
Okay.
And Jess is on her own Zoom account, so we are muting and asking her to join us.
I think I'm unmuted, but it won't start the video. Does that matter?
Nice. We hear you.
It's okay.
There you are.
Do we just begin?
And if, if you're both ready, Jess, if you could start reading the oath of office.
Okay. All right. Mary Ann Riggins, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mary Ann Riggins.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As council member of the city of Malibu.
As council member of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of California.
And the constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the constitution of the state of California.
To the constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. Love you.
Love you.
Congratulations, Mary Ann. Doug, are you ready?
I am ready and hopefully Sharon Stewart is ready too.
Have we found Sharon in the, in the meeting, Kelsey?
Yeah. Sharon is under the name Doug Stewart as well, and we are asking her to unmute. And if you give us a moment, we can get her video up.
Very good.
Okay, I think I'm on.
You are on.
All right.
All right, Doug Stewart, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Alright, Doug Stewart, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Doug Stewart.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As council member of the city of Malibu.
As council member of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to uh election of the mayor. And we're gonna start by a presentation from Mayor Pro-Tam Silverstein. It's time.
That wasn't on my agenda, but I'm gonna wing it. I assume the presentation is to you, Paul, for your um two terms as mayor for eighteen ni- nineteen months as mayor. Um, you know, you really embraced the position and um you 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 did. I mean, you 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 owned it. And um I think the city was better for it. And I know there was um, you know, some consternation at the two elections, but you you I said, you you owned it, you did a great job. Um, I was proud to watch you in in um. In doing so, and um I'm sure you're gonna enjoy the uh the rest now. So, thank you, Paul, and um. If you can speak, if you have anything to say.
I I do have some things to say, and yes, I will appreciate uh actually having a little more time to devote to my business. And uh my family and uh. I I I wanna tell whoever is going to be the mayor that they are going to have a great time getting lots of random emails that uh. From many parts of the world, and uh they all require an answer of some sort. And uh I'm hoping that uh. Whoever it is enjoys it more than as much as I have and maybe even more. Uh, are there any public speakers?
Yes, we have two speak.
Two speakers.
I don't see Bill. I don't see Bill in the meeting. But I do have Marissa, and then we'll see if we can circle back.
Alright, Marissa, are you available?
Yes, I am, thank you. Um, I want to um thank the council for everything they've done so far, and I wish the best of luck to both Doug and Mary Ann. Uh, they're hardworking people who have been involved in supporting this community in many ways outside their jobs, which I really appreciate. And I wanna thank um how the community for supporting them. I really also hope that. We can bring together, as I stated previously, for Mikey and Karen, a a feeling of the old Malibu, which was very. Um, didn't matter what our party was, didn't matter what we thought about everything, we just all got along, and I really hope we can get back to that. A sense of temperament, both professionally and personally, and I look forward, I wish everybody in the council the best. Mister Grisanti, you always are the best and you always do the best, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marissa.
I still don't see Bill Sampson in the meeting, so that concludes public comments.
Okay, can we open the nominations from the floor? The floor is now open for nominations for mayor. I see Steve Uring's hand and I see Doug Stewart, so Steve, you're first.
Okay, prior to a nomination, I would like to welcome Doug Stewart and Mary Ann Riggins. Uh, I'm looking forward to a very productive city council as we go over the next couple of years. Uh, thank you very much for the effort you put into winning, and I'll give you the one bit of advice that I got the day I got elected. Um, a good friend of mine said, the only thing worse than losing a city council election is winning one, so I. Welcome to the meat grinder. Glad to have you. I would like to nominate Bruce Silverstein for for mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Silverstein is nominated for mayor. Are there further nominations for mayor?
I would like to make a statement uh in support of uh Councilman Silverstein, if I could.
Please.
Uh, yeah, the uh selection of the next mayor has become a wedge issue uh for our community over the last two years. It's divided our residents and it's been highly visible example of divisiveness that ultimately. And unfortunately, it became the norm rather than the exception for Malibu. While Malibu has a custom but not a rule of rotating the mayoral position, this was suspended regarding Councilmember Silverstein. At the start of his term and then later when the mayor's position was voted on again. However, I ran on a platform of a kinder, safer, our Malibu. To that end, I pledged to do all I could to stop the hateful speech, the harassment, the bullying, and divisiveness has become so distasteful to so many of our residents. Plus, I have a duty to represent all the residents, not just the ones who voted for me. I believe deciding on a new mayor is a good first step to starting the new tone for our city. The Malibu Times asked the recent candidates if they would vote for Councilmember Silverstein to be mayor. My reply was yes, provided that while at least in that position, he would follow Malibu's customary and generally accepted mayoral norms. That's what those were, conduct the meetings under Robert's Rules of Order. Follow the written council policies and council resolutions for council rules of procedure and decorum. And conduct him presenting himself in a manner that reflects positively on the image of the city. Bruce and I have discussed uh my just presented comments and has agreed that this is a new beginning for all concerned. And my three criteria are reasonable, and he's pledged these will be the basis for his conduct uh going forward. With this, I'll second the nomination for Bruce Silverstein to be the next mayor of Malibu.
Well, it would appear that it's appropriate for me to say, hearing no further names, nominations for mayor are now closed. Uh, Kelsey, will you take the role?
Councilmember Riggins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Uring.
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Silverstein.
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti.
Yes. Okay, uh. It is now appropriate for me to turn the meeting over to the newly elected mayor. Bruce, you are now the mayor. And I am a councilperson again.
Okay, well, um, first thing I'll do now is open nominations. The floor is now open for nominations for Mayor Pro-Tam. Oh, Doug, looks like your hand is first, as I see it.
Uh, let me defer to Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, you're up.
I'll nominate uh Steve Uring for Mayor Pro-Tam.
We have a second for Steve's nomination.
I'll second Steve Uring for uh Mayor Pro-Tam.
Are there any other nominations? Alright, hearing no further names, nominations for Mayor Pro-Tam are now closed. Will um clerk, please take the role?
Councilmember Grisanti.
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Uring.
Uh, I'll abstain.
Mayor Silverstein.
Can't make up your mind, has Steve?
Ah, yes, of course.
Yes.
Alright, congratulations, Councilmember Uring, the elected mayor pro temp.
Thank you all very much for your votes and for your confidence. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, it says here now remarks by newly elected mayor. Um. A a friend of mine was elected or uh appointed as a um judge many years ago, and I'll always remember what he said was. I'm just appointed now. I I, you know, I'll let my actions speak for me, and hopefully you'll appreciate my actions and I'll appreciate the position, so. I'll wait until the term is over to say anything, and in any event, the main event here is the um remarks of our newly elected city council members. Um, so now administration of oath of office to newly elected mayor and mayor pro temp. Uh, I'm gonna have my son Louis um. Do my um oath of office, and he's here with me. Where are you?
Hi. Okay, please raise your right hand or repeat after me.
Uh, it's your right hand. That is my right hand.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Bruce Lee Silverstein.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will diligently serve as mayor of the city of Malibu.
Do solemnly affirm that I will diligently serve as mayor of the city of Malibu.
Uh, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And, sorry, go ahead.
And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the state of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the state of California.
Uh, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you, Louis.
Yep.
And it says the city clerk will swear in the newly elected mayor pro temp. Steve, do you have someone else that you would like to swear your name? You're muted, Steve.
And my wife was here, but we don't have the language. So, Kelsey, if you would be kind enough to do that, I would appreciate it.
With my audio issues, I'm actually gonna ask my deputy Tiana Christensen to administer the oath.
Excellent.
Good evening, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes. Alrighty, Steve Uring, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve Uring.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
I will diligently serve.
As mayor pro temp of the city of Malibu.
As mayor pro temp of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that uh and that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you folks for your confidence in your vote. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to everyone, our new incoming council members, and Paul for being relieved of your obligations. Um, so the main event now remarks by newly elected council members. Um, Doug, you received the most votes, so you can choose whether you wish to speak first or second.
Let me defer to Mary Ann, let her go.
Okay, Mary Ann, you're up.
Um, I'll try and keep them brief, but um first I wanna thank Karen and Mikey. Uh. They have both been uh so amazing for our community, both before their time on council and during their time on council. They've both worked so hard and said such a great example. Um, I hope to do um them proud in this honor. Um, I would also like to thank the Malibu community for electing me to city council. Um, I could not have done this without so many supporters and the financial contributions to my campaign. It's greatly appreciated. I had uh two wonderful students from Pepperdine volunteer on my campaign, Eshan Metta and Jackson Geiger. Uh, they were absolutely great, along with uh my daughter Jess at uh helping my social media and uh keeping me out there in the community and just. Joining in on anything I possibly could need from them. Um, I was fortunate to have many former council members speak to me and share their experience and the history of our community. Um, I know it will help me be a good council member going forward, and I hope to be able to uh reach out to them in the future. Um, as tackling things and just to stay close on where we have come from as a community and um how to chart that in the future where we're going. Um, I wanna thank the staff. Uh, we have an amazing staff at Malibu. I am in the very unique position of having worked closely for the last seventeen years. With um. A variety of people through the years. Our current staff members are wonderful. We have new people coming on that are just fabulous. And they are truly um our greatest asset um as city council members. Uh, they work so hard for us and they are so smart and so intelligent, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what we're gonna do in the future together. Um. I do have many important things that uh for our community that I would like to accomplish in my time during city council. I would like to see the completion of the school separation. It would be great at the end of it to have a Malibu Unified School just. I could think it's the next step for our community, and it's important for us to have that local control. Uh, continuing on improving our public safety and doing everything that we can to make sure that. Um, our residents are safe here and that we're able to take care of our visitors and um. Everyone's just protected and safe and able to enjoy our beautiful environment. Um, I also wanna see the creation of um many community recreation facilities that we are desperately in need of in this community. And I would like to see the creation of more uh cultural arts areas. These are important things for our community to have, for us to gather together and to enjoy one of those company in um beautiful art and recreation. Um, I will need all of Malibu residents to join in and show your support for these items. Only together can we achieve these goals. And so I hope that the residents of Malibu will express their ideas in the coming months and years. Of what they wanna see on various properties and that they support the creation of these places for us. Uh, lastly, I wanna thank my family. My husband Harris, my daughter Jess. Uh, she was invaluable during my campaign, um a sounding board, somebody I can turn to to bounce off ideas. She grew up in this community, so she brings a unique perspective along uh to help me with that. Um, her husband Ian has also been a great perspective and and somebody for me to to learn and speak with. Um. Let's see. And uh. I just wanna thank all the the residents of Malibu, and I look forward to working with them. I look forward to working with our outside agencies. And uh doing everything we can to make sure that this continues to be an incredibly wonderful, beautiful place to live. Um, I'm looking forward to working with my fellow council members and um all our commissions. And uh just make this a great place. So, thank you very much, and I I welcome our teamwork. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Alright, Doug, you're up.
Okay, well, first off, let me say it's truly an honor to be a council member for the city of Malibu. I wanna thank all the people who worked so diligently on my campaign and all those who voted for me and put their trust in me to represent the community that we all love and enjoy. For those who voted for someone else, I want you to know your vote is not lost. I'm here for all our residents, and my desire is to bring. My campaign slogan of a kinder, safer, our Malibu to life during our my term in office. During my years in Malibu, I've been fortunate to have interacted with and received live counsel from so many of our former mayors and council members who have gone before us tonight. I thank them for their insight, and I look forward to the wisdom going forward. They are truly a resource that we should use as much as we possibly can. They know the ropes, they know the people, they know the pitfalls, and they will be great great mentors and good uh uh resources for us moving forward. There has to be a special gratitude to our true departing council members Karen and Mikey, who work so hard and done so much for Malibu. Every newly elected council member is going to forever remember how Karen and Mikey were elected on Tuesday. There was a terrible tragedy in Thousand Oaks on Wednesday. The Woolsey Fire started on Thursday. Malibu lost four hundred sixty homes on Friday, and then little over a year later, COVID hit. Our challenges will be forever benchmarked against what the fifteenth and sixteenth councils faced and dealt with so well. Our city will be forever grateful for all that they've done for us and served for us during these difficult times. For me, I tried to listen well during a campaign about what we need to accomplish as a city. The product was my own personal to-do list of not only what I want to be the focus of my first one hundred days in office. But to keep adding on to consistently make Malibu a better place for all of us. Many of you heard me talk about these issues when we were running during the campaign, and I promise you, they may not be in the first hundred days, but we're gonna keep them on the list, and I'm gonna keep working on it. And now to my fellow council members. I look forward to our partnership and working together, and as I talked to many of you even before I ran, thank you for all your support. And this is gonna be a great team to work together. With that, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Doug, and once again, congratulations to both of you. You ran great campaigns and you you earned this position. And as Steve said, we'll see whether you appreciate that victory or not. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, as the mayor, you could just adjourn the meeting.
I know, but I thought I would leave it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Congratulations, Bruce, by the way.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Kelsey, would you please take the role?
Mayor Pro-Tam Uring?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
We lost you, Kelsey.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes, we'll see everybody next year.
Motion carries.
Adios, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks and congratulations.